All right, welcome back, everyone. So now we're on to part two of the consultant presentations. I'll let the first one come up, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Nancy Bice. I'm with Geosyntech Consultants. We are a very large consulting firm, over 1,200 people, specializing in environmental and geotechnical engineering. Worldwide company. But one of our biggest offices is here in the Bay Area. We have 85 people here. And as I show you on this slide, we have all of the capabilities that we need to help UPC with the environmental issues on the project and also the landfill closure issues. So I'm going to just give a quick summary of those. I'm going to talk a little bit about the history. And just to remind everyone, the western third of this property was a former rail yard. And then the eastern two-thirds of the property was a former landfill, municipal landfill. And so I'm going to talk a little bit about the remediation status of that former rail yard on the west and then also the status of the landfill closure. So the rail yard operated, it really started by SP putting fill in that area, starting in 1896 up until 1914, when they built their rail yard. And they basically were, you know, working on their trains and their engines in that area from 1914 to 1960. And those processes ended up in some contamination on the property. And so they've been investigated since the 1980s. And the property is divided into two operable units, primarily because the northern portion of the property was investigated as part of the Slage Lock site, which is even farther north. So they're divided into operable units one and two. We call them OU1 and OU2. OU1 is, has been investigated under the Department of Toxic Substances Control because of the connection with the Slage Lock site. And then OU2, to the south, is under the jurisdiction of the Regional Water Quality Control Board. Both of those agencies are authorized by the Health Code in California to oversee those kinds of cleanups. The former landfill operated from 1932 until 1967 as a municipal landfill and primarily took San Francisco's waste. And the landfilling operation actually ended in 1967. There has been soil fill brought into that site over the years since then. And it is being monitored on a regular basis under the jurisdiction, again, of the water board. And again, they have jurisdiction over landfill monitoring enclosures in California. So just to, you know, kind of bring everybody on the same page, the former rail yard, there've been many investigations done. But when we have a new development plan, there will be a data gap analysis done to make sure that we have all the information we need to design a safe remedy for the site. And with the former landfill, as I said, it's being monitored on a regular basis. And those monitoring results are pretty consistent with other municipal landfills that we monitor in the Bay Area. So I just want to make sure you know there's nothing strange showing up in the monitoring data that we have to date. The status of remediation for OU1, which is the northern part of the rail yard, it is, the contaminants there are chlorinated solvents, similar to dry cleaning solvents that we still use today, and metals, mostly lead and arsenic. And those are primarily related to herbicides that were used in the past to control weeds. So the remedy that's going on there now is an active groundwater remedy that's being conducted as part of the Slage Lock remediation. Because the groundwater flowed to the south and impacted the area that we're calling OU1. So that remedy is ongoing. There will need to be an update for the metals that are there. And we will need to go through a new process of remedial investigation and feasibility study to make sure we understand what's there and how it can be best cleaned up. And then, once we have that additional information, we'll prepare a remedial action plan. And that plan would go out for public review and comment. So the public would have a chance to comment on the appropriateness of that plan. And it would probably include, likely, some active soil cleanup for metals. It would probably include long-term monitoring, some engineering controls where it's appropriate and where it's safe, some land use controls, again, where it's appropriate and safe. And as we did at the Slage Lock site, it would include clean utility quarters to make sure that when workers come in to work on utilities, they're not exposed. The status of that OU1 remediation is that the active groundwater remedy was completed in February of 2011. And we still have long-term monitoring going on. And then, once the remedy is complete for the entire OU1, there will be an O&amp;M plan in place with DTSC, an O&amp;M agreement, operation and monitoring, and then a financial assurance agreement. For OU2, it's a similar story. The only difference here is in OU2, we also have petroleum hydrocarbons from the, both the fuel and the oils that were used in the train. So that adds another contaminant that we need to deal with. There has been no remediation of that site yet. So it's, we would, again, start off with an RIFS process, develop a rap that would go out for public review, and then use similar remediation techniques. And again, at the end, there would be an O&amp;M plan, O&amp;M agreement and financial assurance. For the landfill, the contaminants there would be the landfill gas that's generated by the decomposition of the waste. And then leachate, which is generated by water getting into the landfill, coming in contact with the waste, and then coming out of the landfill. So right now, we have landfill gas collection system and a landfill leachate collection system that are operating. When this, when it's redeveloped, that landfill, we need to be officially closed. And there's a whole closure process that we will go through. And I've listed some of the elements of that up here, so I don't think I need to go through that. But it will include cover of the landfill to make sure that the waste is covered and won't be exposed, which will include an analysis of sea level rise to make sure that that's not an issue. And I think that's, I think that's everything that I wanted to cover.
Thank you.
Okay. See who's next.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Todd Adair with BKF Engineers. Sorry, thank you. We are the engineers of record for the Baylands projects. We've been working on the project for about 10 years now. BKF is located on the peninsula. We've been here just over 100 years now. And I've been working on projects similar to this around the bay, in the bay margin areas for the past 25 years. When we look at the Baylands project from an infrastructure standpoint, we really divide the site into two different, two different projects, on the west side of the railroad tracks and on the east side of the railroad tracks. On the west side, it's very similar to other projects around the Bay Area, up and down the peninsula and around the bay margin areas. The biggest concern from an infrastructure standpoint being the consolidation of bay mud as we raise the sites up and add weight in the form of fill to the project and how we deal with that consolidation of the bay mud and settlement through time. So many projects have been dealing with this successfully for many years now. And mitigations range from preconsolidation, surcharging of the bay muds, where we bring in large amounts of dirt and pile it up, let it sit for a while, reconsolidate the bay mud, then take it off before we install the infrastructure. Other mitigations include things like lightweight fill, cellular concrete, geofome, other materials that are much lighter than soil that we've put on the site so we wouldn't induce the added weight to the bay mud and help us mitigate the settlements that occur. Places like Redwood Shores in Redwood City, Foster City, places in San Mateo, even in South San Francisco and here in Brisbane, have been using these types of techniques for bay mud settlements for years, very successfully. On the east side of the railroad tracks, we have very similar conditions with the added issues of landfill. The refuges in the landfill, as Nancy just mentioned, continue to degrade over time and create additional settlements beyond the bay mud issues that I just mentioned. So we can't really mitigate those additional fills from degradation of the landfill, the refuges. Instead, we work closely with the geotech engineers to define what that settlement, anticipated settlement will be and design our infrastructure to accommodate that settlement through time. Through the use of hinge labs for entrances into buildings, flexible materials, utility materials, pavement materials, flexible utility connections into buildings and into infrastructure that's adjacent to the site. There are some of the techniques that we would use to mitigate that settlement. The added complexity also of installing the landfill, Nancy mentioned before, and reshaping that landfill to accommodate deeper utilities, utility corridors, so we can put clean fill around utility infrastructure underneath some of the streets and things that would help us for future maintenance concerns in the landfill. So first approach would be to reshape the landfill, make it fit with what we're proposing to do before we start. We also have, you know, as was mentioned, the maintenance and monitoring would also be for infrastructure as well, to make sure that we have, or our systems operate the way we anticipate them to operate through time. Through topographic surveys, monitoring the cap, make sure that, you know, even after earthquakes, making sure that there aren't any ruptures that need to be repaired. Monitoring settlement, making sure that the rates and the magnitudes of settlement that we anticipate are in fact happening. If they're happening faster or going beyond what we anticipated, then we can see that early enough with the monitoring program and fix it before it becomes an issue. Part of that monitoring program also requires that we have a funding mechanism, as we mentioned before, that pays for that repair, maintenance and repair through time. So landfill development's not new in the Bay Area. One on the right. Not new in the Bay Area. We've been working on landfills for the past 20, 20 years plus, starting with the Home Depot project in Colma. It's on about a seven-acre landfill site. It's a 100,000 square foot building and a parking garage on seven acres of unlined Class III solid waste landfill. The anticipated settlements when this project started were on the order of five feet. And so through time, things have had to be repaired. But that's part of the maintenance and monitoring program to accommodate five feet. The project included driving piles through the landfill, which is allowed as long as we can show that we're able to seal the piles at the cap and also at the bottom. In this case, the bottom was rock, so that was easy to do. There's no aquifers or anything of concern below us. The project, like all landfill projects, reviewed and approved by the Integrated Waste Management Board, Lead Enforcement Agency, in this case, San Mateo County, which would be the same for this landfill, as well as San Mateo County Health Department and the Regional Water Quality Control Board would review this as well. Next project, our America Center project in San Jose, we've been working on since the early 2000s, late 1990s, early 2000s. It's a phased project. It's about 70 acres of landfill that we closed at the very beginning, the entire 70 acres. And through time, through phases, the first two buildings that you see there were installed in Phase 1. The second, the third building is under construction right now as part of Phase 2. And there's also been one hotel constructed, an aloft hotel that you can see from Highway 237. So same thing with this project, the issues with settlements, the concerns of penetrating the cap, reshaping the landfill, that it works well with the infrastructure that's proposed. We are able to penetrate the clay cap as long as we can show that we repair it and replace it in kind so that, you know, we don't, we protect the landfill from water and leachate and things of that nature. This project, we anticipated three to five feet of settlements. And below us is a mixture, on this side, a mixture of bay muds and sands and aquifers below us. So there was a large concern about driving piles into the landfill and pushing refuges into the aquifers. And so here, they pre-drilled piles for the buildings through the landfill and then drove piles from there on down and filled the space with a casing around the first part, the pre-drilled part, with bentonite, which helped to seal the landfill from the aquifers below. Again, approvals to Integrated Waste Management, the Lead Enforcement Agency. There was the City of Santa Clara, I'm sorry, City of San Jose had their own LEA, which included, in this case, bringing in a third-party reviewer to make sure that we were in agreement on mitigation of issues on landfills were being addressed with the Water Quality Control Board. And this site actually is a LEED gold-certified project as well. And then finally, probably a project you're most familiar with, Sierra Point, Brisbane. We've been working on that site. We started working on that site in the late 90s. It's a closed landfill as well. The property between, where there's the property line, South San Francisco to the south, Brisbane to the north. It's included about 2 million square feet of office, three hotels, about three-quarters of the 2 million square feet has been built. There's still a few sites in Brisbane on the north side that are still vacant. But again, you know, we anticipated about three to four feet of settlement in this location. We drove piles, mainly steel piles and concrete piles through the landfill. Below us was bay mud, so everyone was confident that the bay mud would help seal leachate and things from getting into surfaces below or into the bay. There's an ongoing monitoring program out at this site, a business association monitoring program as well to make sure that leachate isn't ending up in the bay or methane gas isn't collecting in areas and can be vented and collected. Again, approvals, you know, same as all these projects. We're going to go through the Integrated Waste Management Board, the local enforcement agency, I mean, in this case, again, the San Mateo County Health Department and the Regional Water Quality Control Board as well. And finally, the most recent one that we're involved in, City Place in the City of Santa Clara, just got approval late last year for the land use change for an old golf course, about 175 acres of closed landfill. It will be developing upwards of 7 million square feet of office, retail, 700 rooms of hotels, and 1,300 or so residential units. Approvals to date, the post-closer land use approvals happened late last year. And just a week or so ago, the regional board approved the new WDR, Waste Discharge Requirements for the site. And similar to this project, the WDRs require that we provide them with information and studies and reports and plans to control leachate, control methane gas, final cap designs, mitigations for any penetrations of the final cap. Pile installations, you know, and how we propose to handle pile installations on the site as well. I think it's important to note that on all these projects, the idea of a maintenance and monitoring program to make sure that systems are operating the way they are designed and planned and help us to see if there are issues starting to form, settlement rates and things beyond what we anticipate when we do the designs. So, and then also making sure that we have a funding mechanism to make those repairs as we go forward. One of the things to point out, I think, just to maybe drive home the point, although we've done quite a bit of studies on the site to date, we still have a long way to go. We still have final reports, final designs, a post-closer land use proposal, all of that. It has to be reviewed and approved by the local enforcement agency, the Regional Water Quality Control Board, California Integrated Waste Management, City of Brisbane. So we have a long way to go with the final designs and the mitigation measures to make sure that the developments on the landfill will be safe. So I think that's pretty much what I had at this point.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, City Council. My name's Tom Graff with GraffCon. I've been doing this, the kind of work I've been doing is working with brownfield development, both environmental, geotechnical aspects for over 35 years now. And here in Brisbane for about 12 years. As kind of the breadth of experience, I coordinated the initial conceptual layout for Mission Bay, for how to do the environmental for the overall development, Pac Bell Park. I work in many different railroad, trucky rail yard, Oakland rail yards redevelopment. So I've been working on brownfield sites for many, many years. And so what I've been doing in combination with Nancy Bice and the Geosyntechs is really working on how to do things efficiently. So what I'd like to take and answer some questions about tonight are some specific ones that have been asked by not only the council and Planning Commission, but folks. Is, one of the main ones is liquefaction. And so one of the things I wanted to do is kind of give you a broad brush and talk about what actually happens at the landfill in liquefaction. What you see on your figures, you've got two cross-sections going across and a yellow line, if you can, I don't know if you can see here, see that yellow line there? That's the sand, Old Bay Deposit delineation, which you can see in the next couple of figures. So what we have at the site, the landfill, we've got soil fill, we've got waste, we've got bay mud. And then we have below that, sand to the southeast side and Old Bay Deposits, which are clay deposits to the north, underlying by bedrock. And so with those two, you can see in this one, the sand goes up maybe 30, 40% into the southern area, whereas in this figure, the sand is really only about 25% or so of the site. Reason that's important is when we look at liquefaction, liquefaction in an earthquake is a wave that affects permeable soils, so sands and silt, and has very little effect on clay soil because the pore spaces in clay is so small that the water pressure can't permeate throughout the clay layer where the water can through a sand or silt. So manifestations at the surface of liquefaction are really threefold. There are sand boils, there's settlement, and there's lateral spreading. And so what we have, the sand deposits, there's been a number of borings down into those sand deposits at the site. The sands are relatively dense. And so what happens in liquefaction is the water pressure comes in and it tries to force away, force apart the sand or the silt particles. If the sand is relatively dense, it can't do much to move it. If the sand is loose, then you get the actual liquefaction that you've seen in disaster movie films. And so what we're seeing at the site for sand boils is there'll be water pressure. It'll try to move vertically, but because you've got 60 feet of fill over the top, the water can't go very far because there's not much to move with the dense sand. Settlement is the same thing. In the sands, because they're dense, we'll expect a few inches, three, four inches or so of settlement at a depth of 60 feet. So by the time it translates up to the ground surface, you're not looking at a significant impact on the buildings or streets above it. Lateral spreading is the same thing. If the sand loses the ability to support the soil above it, you can get a movement of slopes away on the top of it. But again, because the sand is not, you're not getting a complete liquefaction of the sand, you're getting a bit of pressure in it, we won't expect lateral spreading to be a significant problem at the site. Another question that was asked, which Todd addressed a bit before, again, is what happens when the piles go through the landfill? Is it going to create a problem with groundwater going down or gases coming up? And so what we have at this site is we have 20-plus feet of young bay mud. It's a very pliable clay. So when the pile goes down through it, the clay seals around the pile. The bay mud, the water board usually likes to see five to 10 feet of bay mud as a seal around a pile so that water can't go down into a lower aquifer. We have two things happening. We've got water pressure underneath because the water's coming down the hill. So the water underneath the bay mud has an upward pressure. It's a vertical gradient upward. So the water's trying to come up. But what we do for bay mud, or to make sure we don't have waste going down into the bay mud or lower, as this, as the San Jose site was, they use round metal casings that they drill through the waste. They take that material out, then they drive the pile through that so you're not taking any of the waste down into the lower materials. Another question yet was definitely one of the BB CAG meetings was that, are all the piles going to go down to bedrock? Do they need to go down to bedrock? And again, it's, everything is done on a site-specific basis, on a building-specific basis. So if you have three or four or five-story buildings, you don't need really substantial, heavy, heavy-based footings. And so at the Sierra Point site, which I pulled out, we've got buildings, one building is down to bedrock. And the rest of the buildings are either founded in the sand underneath or the Old Bay Deposits, friction piles underneath. So again, it's pile design by the geotech engineers is done on a site-specific basis. Individual borings are drilled for each building site and the designs are done. And according to the weight of the building and the type of material, that is how they're designed. So all the piles don't need to go to bedrock for a firm, firm basis. And the last question that I'd like to address is the whole risk management. And it's something that was discussed at the BB CAG meeting last week. Chip Gribble from the DTSC was talking about it. When we have residual metals, VOCs in groundwater, petroleum at concentrations above levels that would allow, for example, residential or normal commercial, there, we, as part of the remediation, there'll be capping, and we use land use restrictions, deed restrictions, which limit different kinds of use. For example, no, no single-family residence with a backyard if you've got stuff in the soil underneath it. And what these LUCs, land use covenants, require is a soil management plan that talks about during development, what do you do with the soil? How do you handle it? What are the health and safety precautions? What do you do with the water? What do you do with the water if you have to pump it? What do you have to build into the building? So, for example, if you've got VOCs, do you have to have a vapor management system underneath the building? So, during construction, these SMPs are used to guide the entire development in coordination with the regulatory agencies, which are kept in touch with it. Post-development, the SMPs again are used to develop operation and maintenance plans, which Todd had referred to also. This maintains the regulatory oversight for these developments in perpetuity. And it looks, they require annual inspections, they require post-earthquake inspections, and very importantly, they require financial assurance. What Chip Gribble had talked about is there's a whole department in the DTSC that actually calculates what the financial assurance requirement is for a given development. So, for one I'm working on in South San Francisco, it's, there's roadways that are a cap, there's concrete areas, there's landscaped areas, there are buildings. They calculate the replacement value of the asphalt streets. How often do you have to repave them? That goes into the financial assurance, which the site owners have to either post as a bond, or they have to guarantee in some manner, long-term maintenance and repair over a 30-year period is what the DTSC requires, is over a 30-year period. And there's also insurance policies that can be purchased, again, for long-term assurance of maintenance and repair of facilities. Same thing for the landfill, although there's more layers there because, as Todd had pointed out, you've got the water board and CalRecycle through the San Mateo County Health Department for the Title 27 requirements, you've got the Bay Area Air Quality Management Board, which handles any of the gas collection systems, and what do you do with the gas collection? They monitor and oversee that. You've got Department of Fish and Game and Army Corps of Engineer because there's wetland replacements that are going to be happening throughout the landfill area and into OU2. And you've got BCDC for anything within the 100-foot shoreline band. So, there's, the Title 27 requires gas monitoring and venting systems for the life of the project. As long as there's landfill gas, those systems have to be monitored and kept up for the life of the buildings. There's long-term cap inspection and monitoring management for leachate. There's, the leachate has to be controlled as it's going to, in this case, the bay. So, there's leachate collection systems, leachate monitoring, leachate management systems. And these all have to be designed, approved by the water board, approved by San Mateo County, and there's long-term maintenance requirements for all these. And so, the last one is, the question is, well, what happens to the roads? What happens to these, to the City of Brisbane? Is City of Brisbane going to get stuck with this kind of stuff, you know? And so, if we take Sierra Point as an example, there's the ESPMA, SBOA, the organization, the owners' organizations at Sierra Point are responsible, they're part of a group, and they have to pay for the monitoring, the leachate monitoring, the dike maintenance, again, all the, any post-earthquake inspections, the dykes have to be repaired. And then, there's also, City of Brisbane has a whole system where the homeowners association funds City of Brisbane's maintenance of utilities, roads where the City of Brisbane is responsible. So, the point is, is that these can all be modified. Anything that's been learned at Sierra Point can be, can be used, obviously, for the Brisbane landfill, for the UPC landfill. But these are in place, they've been operating for many years, and it's something that the city is protected in this, in this way. And then the last one is insurance. There's insurance available for addressing specific concerns that may come up with, well, what happens in 20 years if this happens, or what happens in 10 years? There's insurance policies that are available for handling specific aspects. And, for example, the whole slage lock remediation was an insured piece. So, it's, no matter what, that remediation was going to be completed because if the contractors that were hired to do it went away, if the owners went away, there was still insurance policy to see it all the way through. So, that was my last one.
Thank you. Okay. Last one.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jim Musbach. I'm founder and managing principal of Economic and Planning Systems. And I've been practicing real estate economists for 37 years. I've been working on this project with UPC for almost a decade now, and then I've had the experience of having several other options or attempts at this project in the past that I've also been, had some experience working on. Economic and Planning Systems is a real estate economics consulting firm. We started here in the Bay Area in 1983. We now have offices in Oakland, Sacramento, Denver, and Los Angeles. We have a whole variety of expertise around the development and redevelopment, the use of land, land use policy, et cetera. Sorry, I'm getting over a hat cold, so my voice is a little scratchy. Some of the areas that I'm particularly involved in and have been for a long time include the real estate market feasibility work, public finance, fiscal and economic impact analysis, reuse and revitalization and redevelopment, and public-private partnerships for development. This is just a partial list of some of the projects that I've been the leader of EPS's work on over the years. I'd say probably 80% of the work I've done over the last 20-plus years has been related to the reuse, redevelopment, repurposing of former rail yards, military bases, airports, and other industrial facilities. And you can see there's a lot here in the Bay Area that you're all very familiar with, Treasure Island, Hunter's Point. You know, we're working now currently on Pier 70 in San Francisco, and also Mission Rock, which is the Giants reuse of their parking lot. We've done work in the rese of the Staple Airport in Denver, the rese of the airport in Austin, and so on and so forth. All of these projects share a lot in common with the Baylands. They all have myriad site remediation requirements, site development requirements, the need for whole new sets of infrastructure, market and financial issues for projects that are, just by their nature, large-scale projects that have to be done over multiple business cycles. And of course, community development issues and community benefits and community acceptance of those projects. So, they, in effect, are kind of like Rubik's Cube projects. And that's one reason I've been so fascinated to work on them because they have virtually everything, you've heard so much from all these consultants about all the really fascinating and interesting and challenging work that they're doing around this site. And likewise, within the real estate economics, it involves virtually everything that we do, from fiscal economics to market studies, financial feasibility, and putting together very complicated financing and implementation plans. I wanted to just talk about a couple of the tools that we use. We have lots of models and other things that we apply when we're doing this kind of work, but there are a couple that are really important that have to do with sort of the balancing out of the public side from an economic and community benefit standpoint, and the economics that are required in order to actually get the project built and financed. So, on the one hand, the development feasibility analysis, this is a tool that we use iteratively and interactively to try to, you know, understand the pieces of the puzzle and see how the pieces can go together. And the ultimate goal of that is to strike a balance between what I would call the economic imperatives, because you just have to have a certain kind of economics of a project in order to bring the capital in to actually make it happen. And the community benefits, which are vitally important in terms of, you know, what is the community going to get out of this? You know, the first thing, of course, is the remediation of a site that is, you know, no longer functional, has a lot of toxics and things like that, but there has to be more than that for the community. These feasibility models are transparent, they provide an objective basis that, you know, both parties can look at and agree on and discuss what goes into them to try to come to a common understanding of what the economics of the project are. On the fiscal side, all of this work is always balanced out with a look at what happens on the city side. You know, what's it going to cost to provide services? What are the revenues that the project's going to generate in order to pay for those services? And, you know, the solving of that, of the puzzle, the Rubik's Cube, if you will, really involves balancing of both of those out. And the fiscal component of this also ties back into the community benefits and what the community gets out of the project. We've done a lot of analysis on this project for years, and I have met with your staff and their consultants many times, and we're still working on it. It's challenging, but, you know, I think we're making some progress. So, just want to touch on a couple of things that drive the successful reuse of these derelict industrial sites. You know, first of all, it has to do, it has to be market-driven. To create value, you need a mix of uses. And I really want to emphasize that because for the scale of these projects, it's really not possible to say we want only this kind of use or not some other kinds of uses. The mix that creates vitality from a community development standpoint is also the mix that drives the economics of the project so that you can get enough value creation in the timeframes that you need to actually overcome the hurdles of remediating the site and building infrastructure and all the other things that go into it, which are enormously costly. The transportation aspects of this involve not only transportation facilities, but also balancing out those land uses so that you can minimize the transportation needs in terms of off-site, kind of one-way commuting. And of course, again, the community benefits, which is kind of the fulcrum on which all of this rests. Just briefly, some of the financing mechanisms that are typically used in these kind of projects. And invariably, because they are so complicated and so many different things that have to be funded, it's really a whole panoply of uses that, or mechanisms that come into the financing. CFDs are very important, not only for capital, but also as a way to make sure that there's mitigation of any fiscal impacts because they could be used to provide services as well. Assessment districts, enhanced infrastructure financing districts, which is what we're left with in the wake of redevelopment going away. And it has, they're enhanced in the sense that IFDs have been around for a long time, but they are now much more amenable to the kinds of things that we used to do with redevelopment tax increment, although they're not quite as robust. Certificates of participation is another way that cities can actually raise capital through their lease commitments. Sometimes those are appropriate for certain kinds of public facilities. And with that, I'll turn it back to Jonathan.
Thank you.
While we're teeing up my final comments here, I just would like to remind council that the packet that we presented at the onset here, and
Bless you.
Three documents, bless you.
Thank you.
That pertain to public record documents you already received regarding questions that were asked by council, planning commission, and the community regarding remediation issues and soil stability. So, we wanted to have that just as easy reference for you. And there'll be some other documents that are new in here that I'll refer to in my final comments. So, thank you. Also, once again, want to acknowledge you, Mayor Liu, and council members for taking the time to hear exclusively from us tonight. And I'd like to make my final comments really along the lines of giving you some food for thought as you commence your deliberations. And with that, I'll begin with recognizing some of the true core values of the City of Brisbane, that after 12 years and hundreds of meetings, we certainly understand and appreciate is a core value of community engagement and participation. And we respect the concerns raised by the council and the community for this project. But we do ask you to please believe the experts who are the ones that, under CQ requirements, have provided thorough analysis for your consideration and facts by which you can have informed decisions made. The opinions of folks, whether it's on items that we agree with or don't agree with, all should serve to inform, in our view, your consideration of the future land uses for this site. But one of the reasons we're so appreciative of the time you're taking tonight is we just want you to have some unfettered access, if you will, to ask residual questions of our experts. If there's any we can't answer, we will, as we have in the past, submit written responses in due course. Follow your sustainability framework. We know a lot of time, energy, effort, and certainly passion went into the development of that. And just to let you know, we've been studying this framework very closely. We had a lot of questions at its inception in the process for developing it because it was an unfamiliar approach to us. And understand how its aspirational goals can be met with the project in the future. To that end, in addition to visiting One Planet Projects in Sonoma Mountain Village and Bedzad, we also have asked BioRegional to provide an independent assessment of the proposed alternatives and the DSP that will be ready in about three weeks. And we urge you to ask their, the founder of BioRegional, Purindasi, for a presentation on their independent analysis of the project. During the remediation hearing, I counseled you, counselors, to reach out to your peers. This is a tremendously difficult series of choices you have before you that some of you've been working on for many years. And we just believe that reaching out to your peers in Emeryville, San Francisco, and elsewhere to ask how they dealt with the remediation project, process, how they dealt with these complicated interface of community concerns, economic concerns, and design concerns, and the like, how they were resolved. And there's many, there's many tools available through those discussions. And I hope that's occurred and helped you honestly answer the second question that I raised to you that evening. And that question was, if you really believe in your hearts, if you really believe that the leadership in those communities who made the decisions about land use on formerly impaired sites care less about the public health and safety of their citizens than you do? I ask that sincerely, and I ask you to, if you haven't, consult with these folks, and please do so before your deliberations. If you have, thank you, and please continue. You'll gather more information that I believe is helpful, and I really think it'll be an invaluable perspective. Mountain View, as a reference point, has been here before, and one of the reasons we have a great concern coming into this process with the EIR, not just with the CPP, but even in, and more so with the planning commission's recommendation, is that what happened with Mountain View in the early 2000s was that they had welcomed with open arms the new jobs that came with the settling of Google into their community, and the tax revenues and benefits to municipal facilities that came, fiscal benefits that came as a result. Unfortunately, during that time, it was truly an unsustainable growth model occurred that we're all paying for as those impacts have been externalized to the region in the form of congestion and the difficulty in housing their workers and moving their workers to that site. And 15 years later, as And 15 years later, as evidenced in the bottom of this slide, City of Mountain View has finally decided to add 9,000 housing units adjacent to the Google campus and the new LinkedIn facilities. This is just food for thought. Please consult with your neighbors. County and state representatives, as highlighted during this year's San Mateo County Progress Seminar and at the most recent, or a recent city council meeting on the Baylands, some of Brisbane's priorities, like restricting public access to the Bay Shore Caltrain Station through proposed rezoning of industrial uses, like the ecology expansion, like the newly proposed renewable energy alternative, and prohibiting housing on a former rail yard adjacent to that Caltrain Station are out of step with regional and state policy. We know this is difficult. We know there are folks that are coming in here and bringing a hammer to you on this. But it is a dispassionate reality. And what we would urge is that you discuss these issues with county officials, with state officials, and be part of the solution. Find a way to have Brisbane contribute to the solving of some of these issues, not just retreat inward. And perhaps that will be useful for you. If you've done some of that, and I know that some of you have, I hope it's been useful. And please continue. Gathering more information will help with this very difficult decision that you have. But I still believe the, we believe the perspective will be of value to you. Now, I've said this before, there aren't that many community members here tonight, but have you ever seen a developer beg in this room before? Because I asked you, I asked you a couple of meetings ago or early in this process that to please, 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 consult with your future employers. Learn what their interests are. Learn what their employees need. Learn about the patterns and the problems that they're trying to anticipate as they grow their workforces and how they can be part of your community in the future and make substantial investments that are going to make Brisbane proud. This is really a critical item that will also help us as we move forward with any development that may be approved out here at the Baylands to be informed by there being a good understanding of what those requirements are. So again, to the extent that you've reached out to employers as the result of my pleas of the past, I appreciate it. I hope you've learned something. Continue to do so. We believe it'll be invaluable. And if you haven't, please start. Lastly, well, not quite lastly, a few more comments. We're here. Negotiate with us. One thing that's clear, overwhelming majority of your, from the various surveys that have been done over the years, an overwhelming majority of your citizens want to see you hammer out a deal with us. And we know it's complicated. We know that we need to reconcile a number of issues, but we're here and we're available to discuss them and come to some reasonable accommodations. To that end, I've long asked this body and city staff to review key recent development agreements between cities and private developers, just for a reference to the structure and the give and take required for a successful outcome. And again, in the documents that were presented tonight are four development agreements that are part of the public record in the cities that they refer to that will provide you, again, with just some very specific perspective on how to document the rights and obligations of cities and private developers in these situations. These include the development agreement for Bay Meadows between the city of San Mateo and the developer there, Park Merced, Schleglock, which I've referred to on, between our company and the city and county of San Francisco. And we have added, because it is brand new and a tremendous reference for a very complicated, dense, commercial, and now residential development on a former landfill, the development agreement between the city of Santa Clara and the related companies, the developer of that project. Economic feasibility as a benchmark. We've long discussed the three-legged stool of sustainability. And we have a lot of respect for the core values around sustainability and social equity that have been embodied in the public process over this past dozen years. But I do not believe that any dispassionate observer of this process could say that thus far, that the economic feasibility has been a driver. It's really been one of the other two. To get to the finish line, regardless of whether we're talking about environmental cleanup, parks, renewable energy, commercial development, housing, economic feasibility is going to be critical or else you'll fall off the stool. You'll fall off the stool. There's no sustainability, there's no project. A couple of personal references. I've devoted my life to this work and I just want to give you a snapshot of some highlights of the last 25 years and how they inform my being here today. First, I want to point out, 1992, a project that was one of the site tours from my attendance at the first U.S. Green Building Conference in Austin, Texas, when the initial LEED standards were adopted. And this was an incredible project called MAXIS-POT. And MAXIS-POT referred to the Center for Maximum Potential Building Systems. You guys would love this project for downtown Brisbane. This is a living, this is a living example of sustainable development in action. Back then, they had recycled materials, roof harvesting, water harvesting, and a number of other features that were just really tremendous and a highlight of that time. A few years later, I was fortunate enough to visit India and one of my heroes, Dr. Vandana Shiva, who I interviewed for Permaculture Drylands Journal about her efforts post-green revolution to help preserve biodiversity in the continent. And I also was fortunate to meet a group that was working on a reforestation project in Maharashtra State that is just extraordinary, turning barren land that had been overgrazed for a generation and had a heat island effect that was increasing temperatures in the area by 10 degrees centigrade, planting hundreds of thousands of trees. It was a true inspiration to me. Over on the left, after we initiated this EIR in 2006, I visited what I believe is one of the great early examples of deep green building in North America in Dockside Green over here on the left in Victoria, B.C. The developers of this project are now doing the largest One Planet project in North America in Ottawa. And what was tremendous about this project, it would not be permissible here in the United States right now, but through the gardens behind the living units, these are actual blackwater recycling ponds that are on top of graywater recycling areas that circulate throughout the development in recirculating the water. This is built on the edge of an industrial canal on a former landfill and has many elements of renewable energy. A couple more. When I, as most of you know, I grew up in New York. New York remains the most sustainable city in the country because, per capita, there's very low greenhouse gas emissions because there's no vehicle miles traveled. You can't get in a car in New York and get anywhere. Everybody has to walk or bike or use public transit. But also, as evidenced here, they were really at the forefront in pioneering some of the higher-density, integrated, vertical green building systems. And this is the Bank of America Tower, the first certified LEED Platinum Tower in the U.S. that was from 2009, again, just about the time that you recommended the CPP. And one, number four Times Square, that was an early adopter and opened in 2000. And New York's just been terrific in that area. And lastly, as most of you know, I did, in just trying to understand more what BioRegional was up to, on my vacation last summer, I visited the Bedzad community, the first net-zero project, I believe, in Europe and perhaps in the world. Again, just a few reminders. When we started this about 10 years ago, what I thought was one of the most eloquent speakers of the Brisbane Speaker Series is a man named Tom Murphy, the former mayor of Pittsburgh. He spoke to a joint session of your council and the Planning Commission up at Mission Blue. I was fortunate enough to visit some of the incredible sites that he had stewarded the redevelopment of on former brownfields in Pittsburgh. One that's shown here, a housing development on a former steel slag heap that is one of the more valuable communities on the urban edge of Pittsburgh. And it's really a tremendous asset from where there before was only a toxic legacy. And if we could just take a moment to listen to some of Mr. Murphy's remarks from that night 10 years ago.
This is your opportunity to shape something that challenges everybody, to think about, to create places of magic. This is your opportunity. Don't kick it away. Make it happen. It's a great space. When I looked at this, when I got these satellite images off, I said, this is not 650 acres on one of the arguably best views in America? And it's a landfill? Now, what were they thinking when they made it a landfill in the first place, right? But then, what an opportunity for you to say to the world, look at us. We have a place to create something really special. This is your opportunity to shape something that challenges everybody, to think about, to create places of magic. This is your opportunity. Don't kick it away.
I don't know if I did.
I was sitting in the audience, actually.
Just to be clear, that was downloaded. That was downloaded and not messaged off of Brisbane's website.
It wasn't no music.
There wasn't.
Sounds like a United Way campaign.
And finally, as I mentioned before, we did, we really are trying to wrap our arms about what One Planet means. And so, we engaged BioRegional to prepare an assessment of the site that I hope can be shared with you in the coming weeks. This is me visiting there last summer and Mr. Desai, who many of you met, he has, he asked for a verbatim statement while there to be given to you. And without going through all of it right now, I would ask you to invite him to come and share his thoughts with you and his conclusions. We're looking forward to the same. One of the conclusions that even before they're finished, that they already have raised is fairly consistent with what you've been hearing from the region, and that is that housing is a major part of a sustainable solution for the site. With that, we'd love to take your questions on the second half and particularly if there's any concerns about remediation, geotechnical items, economic feasibility, or the like. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. We'd like to start off with questions for the consultants. Clark?
Yeah, I had a couple. Let's see, it would be, Bob from Brian King's fault? Yeah. This is just more for clarification, Bob. Because I'm not sure if I heard you right. You talked about other materials being placed out there that are lighter than soil? Is that what you said?
Yeah, yeah. It's Todd, by the way. It's not Bob, sorry.
Huh?
It's Todd, dear.
Todd, okay, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, the use of cellular concrete, lightweight fill, geofone is one technique to reduce the amount of load on the site.
What is that?
Cellular concrete's a, it's a concrete that's a lightweight concrete.
Like a fly ash?
It's air entrained, so there's voids in the concrete. It's like, it acts like a soil. It's ripable. You could dig through it. But it's much lighter than soil.
Okay. And then the American Center in San Jose, is that the one that's off of 237?
It is, yeah, at the end of.
So it's kind of up on the hill?
Yeah, it's up on the hill. It's up on the, it was an old landfill, so it was mounted up.
Yeah. Then the one in Santa Clara, he says a 239-acre site and 175 acres on existing closed landfill. So there's about 64 acres of what, solid ground?
Yes, it sits off the landfill, right.
Is that where the residential units are going?
No, the residential unit's going to be spread out amongst.
Throughout the whole thing?
Yeah.
Okay. That's it. That's all I have for you.
Okay, thanks. Madison?
Anything for Todd?
Sorry, I had one question for Todd. You talked about on the Sierra Point site that you were, or it was done in 1999? Or is that when you started becoming involved?
1999. Yeah, that's when we started working on it.
Okay. And you said that you anticipated three to four feet of settlement?
That's correct.
And I know on the Dakin Building, they just recently remodeled, they had quite a bit of settlement, maybe not on the building itself, but certainly on the surrounding areas. And what was the findings of how much settlement that truly was? Because it appeared much more than three to four feet.
Oh, it's on the order of a foot and a half to two feet. We monitor that site. It's still moving, so we anticipated it'd get to three and four, but it's moving at the rates that we anticipated. And as part of our maintenance and monitoring program. And so, we survey that, those buildings, all of them out there about once a year and keep track of that.
So the total settlement has only been one to two feet?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, yeah, Todd, if you could just stay up. You know, I thought there was a parking structure out at Sierra Point that had some settling issues with it. And Clay or John, maybe you can address that as well. I thought it was a little bit more than.
I think it's what we refer to as the Hitachi Building, it's had quite a bit of settlement. I don't know how many feet, but.
Yeah, so the existing Hitachi Building is much older, so it's probably on the order of three or four or more feet of settlement. So, Hitachi Building, what used to be the Good Guys Building, then the black one, I don't know what it's named now, I don't know what was on the side of it, but those are all done back in the early 90s. those are all done back in the early 90s, I think. Um, and so I, I, I don't know, um, if they had the same regulations to deal with, um, on landfills. Uh, it'd actually be before 90s, so it would've been in the late 80s sometime. So I'm, I'm not sure if they, if they had the same type of regulation, regulatory oversight that we'll have, have had, have on this site.
Okay. And then, um, you know, one of the examples that, that you showed, um, was the Home Depot in Colma. So I, I grew up in South City, that's where we used to dump all our stuff. So that dump was, uh, an unregulated dump?
Yeah, it was a municipal dump, similar to, similar to, you know, the Sierra Point in the site as well. Um, so it, you know, back in the day, that's, it wasn't really any regulations about liners and things like that. So, um, it had to be closed, similar to what we'll have to do here, um, as part of the Title 27 regulations.
Okay, and then, you know, so Sierra Point was a regulated dump?
Um, it, it was, uh, regulated maybe from the standpoint of, of keeping track of-
Keeping track of what was going in?
Yeah, what was going in.
Okay, so you have these two dumps and, and then they both have the Title 27 landfill closure requirements?
Right.
Is there any difference in regards to, um, the process and then, um, uh, levels of, of, um, of risk?
Um, no difference. The, the, the final cover was installed per the regulations, um, and I don't, I don't think there's any difference between the type of municipal landfill material that's in there, if that's what your question is.
Well, just, you know, so you, you know, the concern, uh, you know, with the public is that because it's an unreg- or, you know, the, the Baylands was unregulated, whereas Sierra Point, they were monitoring what was going in, there's the, you know, there's more confidence at Sierra Point than there is out at the Baylands. So I'm trying to understand, okay, well, here you have this Colma dump that, similar to the Baylands, people are just dumping whatever. And so, um, you know, I wanna just understand, you know, that the level of, of remediation is the same and that trying to get a, a, a grip on, on what the risks potentially could be as opposed to, uh, the dump at Sierra Point that was regulated.
Yeah, I don't know, Nancy, if you have anything to add, but I don't, other than closing the landfill and capping the landfill and, and knowing what's, um, you know, through the boring and things like that, knowing what's gonna be under the buildings, where we're gonna be driving piles, I, I don't think there's any, any difference really between the, the regulated and unregulated.
Mm-hmm.
So, and monitoring of leachate and all of that as well.
Yeah, okay.
Cliff, if, if I could, could, uh, on Sierra Point, is, I recall that it was also termed an engineered landfill, where they dyked it off, pumped the water out, then put down a foot of dirt and then a foot of garbage, and a foot of dirt and a foot of garbage. And that was my understanding back then when that was done versus, uh, but also what was going in it, where the landfill or the major landfill was just dumped into the bay. I mean, it was, trucks would dump up, it goes right in the water, you know? And, uh, I remember seeing that, that, uh, watching that, you know, for years on end. So, you know, there's a, a big difference of how, how they were done. And then, uh, from there, they moved to Mountain View, I believe, right? And so-
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not familiar with the history of it. But I'm not, you know, at Sierra Point, I wasn't aware that, that there was an engineered field. I knew it was dyked and the water pumped out, but I wasn't aware that it was-
It was, uh, termed in, I don't know, go through historical records, but that's, uh, that's what I recall, what was requested, that it would be termed an engineered landfill.
Sure.
And that, uh-
Right. So I mean, as part of, you know, the regulatory oversight that we'll have, we'll get into all of that, right? What's the risk of leachate? And, and they've been monitoring leachate for quite a while and haven't come up with anything any different than what they would expect from a landfill.
Okay. And then, you know, you talked about, uh, penetrating the cap with the piles. Um, so are you aware of, of any problems that have come up because of that? And if so, how was it remediated?
Yeah, I haven't, I'm not aware of any problems. Um, I think I would've heard if there were problems, but part of the issue is, you know, we put the concrete foundation on top of the piles, so that acts as a, a barrier as well. Um, the only thing that the, the LEA required of us that I remember at Sierra Point was that when we drove the piles, that we made sure that we didn't leave a depression or water could flow into the depression and down the pile from the surface, that we had to make sure that when they were driving the piles, at the end of the day, when they were done driving, that they, they mounted around it so any, any ru- any rain that might happen or any runoff that might occur wouldn't focus on the hole.
Oh, okay. And then, not, not just Sierra Point, but just all the other projects that you've worked on?
Yeah.
So never any issues with, uh, by penetrating that cap?
No, not at all.
Okay. Um, and then, so what's the, the monitoring system that's in place to assure the public and, and the, um, inhabitants of the buildings that are, um, at these sites that, that, um, that is, you know, that, that, that the membrane is not being compromised?
So, so the issue would be methane for the buildings. And each building will have a methane collection system and a venting system underneath the foundation. Um, they vent it up to the roof, either an active or a passive system to suck the, the methane out. Um, leachate wouldn't be an issue because of the foundation, so rainwater and, and, you know, our improvements around the site would have to sort of grade away from the buildings, typically like you would do with any other site, so that rainwater isn't collecting underneath. So-
Okay. And, um, you know, with, uh, some of these landfills that you've been a part of, have you seen any movement of, of deburty, you know, from the landfill penetrate the cap and move its way up to the surface?
No, I haven't. Um, part of the, part of the cap requirements are a two-foot foundation layer, um, of, you know, soil and, and making sure there isn't rebar and things like that, and then a clay layer, and then more soil on top. So through all of that, I haven't seen anything that's come through the cap or anything that has to be repaired, um, on the cap.
Okay. You know, one of the examples that you showed was, uh, the Santa Clara project. And, uh, you know, I was surprised to see that there was a lot of residential at that site, but not all of it was landfill. So it's the residential, I'm assuming that a residential was not on the landfill site?
The residential is on the landfill.
It is, okay.
Yeah, it'll be intermixed throughout the City Place project. Um, so the, the, the issues with, uh, cause we've explored this in the past on other projects, putting residential on the landfill has to do with a barrier between a landfill and the residential unit. So in this case, the residential units will have, uh, a podium below them, some separation between the landfill and the residential unit.
Okay. And do you, are you aware of, if that Santa Clara site was an engineered site, like Council Member, Member Conway?
Uh, I, I'm not, I'm not sure if it was or not. We'd have to talk to the geotech.
Okay. And then, um-
It's the same vintage as all these other sites. So, you know, the, the, uh, Sierra Point, um, or the America Center site and things like that, it's all about the same age. So I wouldn't, the technology was about the same.
Okay. Uh, you know, you had talked about infrastructure as well as the remediation process. And so in our sustainability framework, we, we mentioned infrastructure tunnels and there's a, a large tunnel project in San Francisco.
Right.
Um, is that something that you have, um, thought about for this site instead of, you know, digging up the streets when there's repairs, having infrastructure tunnels built prior to everything coming on top?
Yes, it's not, it's, no, we, it's not something we've ever contemplated before, doing some sort of a utility corridor kind of a structure.
Yes.
We haven't done that. Um, you know, with the densities that we have in the, in the northern part of the site, the idea of, you know, putting in a podium and then putting utilities on top of the podium, something that we've talked about in the past and creating sort of a, you know, utility corridor above the podium so that utilities can be accessed above the landfill. So that's something that we'd be looking into as well. So whether, you know, whether that's a tunnel idea kind of thing, right? Where, where we would create a concrete box, basically, to put utilities in.
Yeah, you know, I mean, to run whatever utilities that you might need, easily accessible-
Right. So it would operate just like a street anywhere else, um, underneath it would be a concrete structure.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Those are the only questions I have for you, Todd.
Yeah, before he, before he goes, Todd, um, did you refer to the, when, when he asked about if you've seen any type of leachate coming up through the landfill?
Back to the Coliseum.
The Warriors came yesterday.
[laughing]
Um, that, uh, that it's capped?
The, the leachate wouldn't be coming up, it'd be methane gas.
Oh, oh, methane gas, okay.
Yeah, so the, the clay barrier provides some, uh, barrier from methane?
What, what clay barrier?
The, so, so the, the cap that you put over the landfill?
The Title 27, you mean when it is?
What's that?
When it is.
When it's closed.
Yeah, when it, when it's closed, okay.
Right.
I thought you were speaking that it was closed.
No, no, no.
Not that it hasn't happened yet, you know, so-
Yeah, when it's closed.
Okay, all right. So who would describe that closure? You or, or Tom?
Describe the closure?
Just, just a, a methodology. I know it's regulated by, uh, County Environmental Health, is that, is that who does it?
I'm losing sort of the-
The Title 27.
Yeah, Title 27 would be regulated by the LEA.
Yeah.
Which is in, in this county, San Mateo County Health.
Yeah.
And so the, they would be responsible for oversight of what we would propose for the clay cap or the, the prescriptive cap, um, or an alternative to the prescriptive cap. Prescriptive cap is made up of two feet of, of soil, it can be landfill material, but as long as it doesn't have, uh, protrusions out of it. And then on top of that, you put a clay layer, one foot clay layer, a low permeability layer.
Mm-hmm.
And on top of that, another foot of soil for vegetation and protection of the clay cap. But then on, you know, we'll have much more than that, um, in areas where we have utilities and other things, we'll have much more of it.
And then from an engineering perspective, I guess on land use, uh, uh, you have to figure out compaction also, is that right or what?
Uh, well, the compaction, um, except for maybe the open spaces, the compaction would be pretty uniform in the, in the 90, 95% range throughout the site where we're, where we're gonna install infrastructure and buildings. Um, in the open spaces, we might be able to do a little bit less than that, but the clay cap has a certain prescriptive amount of compaction that you have to, have to have. So above the, above the clay cap, um, it could vary in the open spaces.
Okay. Thank you.
So one follow-up with that. So on the prescriptive cap, you're saying it's two feet of soil, one foot of clay and then one foot of soil?
Yeah.
So a four-foot cap?
Right.
And then you would anticipate having another?
Maybe four or five feet above that.
Four or five feet?
Yeah, depending on-
So that you'd have a place to dig for your utilities?
Utilities and, and, you know, if we have vegetation, trees and things like that. So that would be a minimum probably of, you know, four or five feet above that clay cap.
Thank you.
So- Yeah, so, so, um, we would reshape the landfill so that we could create deeper areas of, of soil on top of the, of, on top of the cap as we close it. So in street sections, you know, we might go down, we might put the clay cap down a few feet, you know, four, five, six, seven, eight feet, depending on the gravity utility.
You mean digging into the garbage layer?
Yeah.
Digging into the garbage layer?
On, on the site right now, there's, there's quite a bit of soil on top.
But that all has to come down, off to get to-
Not, yeah.
That has to come off to get to a cap?
Not, not completely. So we could, we could take that soil down and then install a cap. So we don't have to go all the way to the refuse to install a cap. So we could leave soil out there, soil that's out there, whatever depth might be-
But that soil hasn't been engineered.
Right. So we have to make sure that it's compacted to a certain, uh, depth and then bring it back up, but it doesn't mean we have to go all the way to the refuse layer to do that.
So we could be left with the mountain?
Uh, could be, I don't think we will be, but could be.
Okay. Thank you.
So I have a question for you, um, either for you or for Nancy. So you had spoken about the, uh, American Center in San Jose?
Yeah.
Um, and how they had a, a third-party plan check?
Right.
Can you talk about what, what they did? Do they impose higher standards or did they just look at what the cleanup plan was and make sure that everything was done properly? And who did that, that third-party check?
Um, I'd have to get the names of the third-party plan checkers, we can send that in.
Okay.
But, yeah, they, they just confirmed that we were following regulations, um, and making sure that what we were designing was safe and, and, and applicable to, you know, whatever regu- Title 27 regulations that we needed to follow.
Okay. So, um, our consultant, um, many meetings ago, had talked about how we could, if we wanted to have some higher standards imposed for the cleanup, that we could, um, negotiate with UPC to have OEEHA, a different regulatory agency, uh, do the remedial action plan. Um, so have, have you or UPC, um, thought about that and whether you'd be amenable to that sort of arrangement?
So OEEHA is the risk assessment arm of DTSC.
Okay.
So they don't actually write plans, but they do review the plans for, specifically to look at the risks to the public.
Okay. And are you fami- have you worked on, with OEEHA on other projects or are you familiar with them?
Yeah, sure. They, they usually get involved as a reviewer of the risk side of things. And, and the process that we will go through, that RIFS process I mentioned, will include a risk assessment that OEEHA will review.
Okay.
That's just the standard process.
Okay, thank you.
Nancy, uh, if you weren't mind, um, so, um, you know, you have mentioned that your company is, is quite large, got sites all over the country, I guess all over the world too, or just in the United States?
Yeah, all over the world.
All the world, okay. So, um, you know, in California, we have the Cal EPA standards, you know, they're very high, very stringent, uh, standards. Based upon your experience working, um, with other states, are there some parts of remediation that are, have stronger standards in other states than we here have in California?
You know, most of my work in California, um, my experience is that California has the most stringent standards. And, um, for example, one of the contaminants we're dealing with is, is perchloroethylene, which is a common dry cleaning solvent. And the, the federal government has a standard for that, that's, mm, well, the commercial standard is 47 micrograms per cubic meter in the air. In California, it's two. So my experience has been that California, especially OEEHA, they don't, they don't accept things that EPA accepts, they're more stringent. And, uh, it's frustrating for me, cause I, you know, deal with clients that have sites in other parts of the country and they say, why do I have to do it more in California? But, you know, they're taking a conservative approach. And I think it's important to understand that these cleanup goals are extremely conservative. And, and if, if we're below those, we know it's safe. That's the way they should be treated versus, uh, you know, and it, sometimes people treat them as if we're below those, we might be safe. The reality is if we're above them, we might have a problem. And they're developed, you know, with, with very conservative tests, um, they make very good conservative assumptions about exposures. Um, so, you know, in my experience, I mean, I've worked on so many projects and we've just never had a problem with someone actually being exposed and actually having an effect.
Mm-hmm. Well, you know, uh, one of the major concerns of the community is the safety of the site. And so, you know, it's our job to gather as much information as possible, um, to not only inform ourselves, but to inform the public. Um, you know, so when we had our hearing on remediation, we, we did talk a little bit about other standards from other states. Apparently Massachusetts has got some pretty high standards. And that's why I asked you, since you, your company deals with, uh, uh, sites all across the country, that if they're, um, you know, if you're aware of any standards that might be in some other state. Um, you know, you also talked about that, that your company is in other countries. Uh, we also talked about the Dutch standards. Um, and so are you, are you familiar with, with those standards and how they-
I'm not.
No, okay. Um, in one of your slides, you, you listed some of the products that went into landfill one, which was- which was, um, shipyard waste. So, um, what are, are some of the, the types of, of items from the shipyard that, that went into landfill? That you're aware of?
I don't know specifically, I know there is a report where we looked pretty carefully at what, what the waste materials were. Um, so I, I can get back to you on that, but I, but there's a very specific analysis of the waste materials that went in there.
Okay.
Part of the EIR process, there was a hazardous waste, uh, assessment report done.
Okay.
In two thousand and eight.
Um, also in one of your slides, uh, you talked about the, um, the data gap analysis. And so, um, you know, a lot of this work was done a long time ago. Um, you know, can you just dive a little bit deeper into that and how that would work? I mean, again, it's trying to, um, you know, ensure that, that we're not, uh, leaving any stone unturned.
Right. And, you know, that process, basically, you get as much as information as you can on what was done where at the site, what kinds of chemicals were used. And, and then you, you know, look at whether or not you have data for those uses and considering the development plan. So that's the important piece, is once you have the development plan and you know what's going to be built where, and you know what was done where, then you can sit down and say, am I, am I missing something? Should I be testing for something that hasn't been tested for? And my guess is that, you know, we've got, we've had uses of the site since a lot of that testing was done. We're going to have to look at those uses. We're going to have to go back and look and make sure that we have a thorough assessment of the previous uses. And I, there will be more investigation.
Okay. Uh, you, uh, you talked about the, the wrap and that there'll be the public review and comment period. And, um, this is probably maybe a question for Lloyd. Is that, hey Lloyd, sorry to interrupt your conversation. But, you know, in regards to the, to the wrap, and then there's the public, uh, comment and review period, um, in, in regards to moving forward with, with the wrap, what type of, um, uh, say does, does the city have in approving it? Or it stamping its sealed approval?
All right, the, the wrap itself and its approval is by the regulatory agencies, either DTSC or the regional board. So you are not approving or ha, do not have approval authority of the wrap. What you do have approval authority over is the land use upon which the risk assessments and the remediation standards of the wrap would be based.
Okay, so you, the council could say, um, we'll approve this use, but we don't, we feel there needs to be another, um, we're, we're not comfortable with what was approved in the wrap. Perhaps if we had another, um, assessment that we could say, oh, it should be approved. We'll, we'll move forward with allowing this use based upon this other standard. If you could just kind of?
Yeah.
Share that?
I mean, some of the options you, you would have there, because you remember that your regulatory authority is with the land use. So you could say, and I think we had talked about this before, is that residential would be permitted or could be permitted at a general plan level, um, based on a wrap being approved by the regulatory agency with which the city was in agreement.
Got it, okay.
But you cannot dictate what is approved in the wrap. You could, for example, say, um, residential would be permitted within a portion of the site pursuant to, and then a series of, these are the requirements we would have if, or requirements that would need to be met for residential to actually be approved as a physical land use on the site. So you would have kind of a, not contingent general plan, but residential be permitted subject to the following, one of them being a wrap you would approve, or that would be approved that you would be in agreement with, and then whatever other requirements you would have.
Okay, all right, thank you for that, Lloyd. Uh, all right, you know, and there was, uh, there was a, um, response from, from a resident in regards to taking some contamination from one site, from OU one, OU two, and during the Title 27 landfill closure, moving some of those contaminants to the other site. Now, Todd saying that you didn't have to get down to the garbage was, to me, I thought you had to do that in order to engineer the site. Um, is, is that?
You're talking three different sites there. So OU one is?
Yes, we've got OU one, OU two.
The rail yard, OU two's the rail yard.
That's right, so.
And then landfill is.
That's right, so taking some of the material from OU one or OU two and moving and taking, you know, that could be part of the remediation, is removing those contaminants and placing it in the title, placing in the landfill under Title 27 landfill closure requirements. Is that something that you, you have thought about and consulted with? All right, I don't know, maybe that isn't an appropriate question, but is that something that, that you contemplate?
So, what's happening now is that the only soil that can be brought to the landfill is clean soil now. So, and the water board has, uh, has approved all the concentrations that go in. So if there's contaminated soil on OU one or OU two, it could not be moved to the landfill currently. Because there's, the landfill is not allowed to accept waste anymore.
Okay, all right.
So it's, it's, so the soil that's on the landfill currently, as it comes in, is all tested. There's been a, a lot of testing, because the soil gets, so, is being sold and is being, is being off-hold, and all that soil is being tested. So it's been tested twice, it's coming, tested, it's coming in, but it's also tested as it leaves the site. And it's, it's fine for basically residential use.
Okay, you know, I mean, the reason I, I bring it up is that, you know, I mean, for a lot of folks, making the site safe is, is taking out the contamination, not just, just capping it. Uh, especially when it comes to residential. And so, um, you know, I'm just trying to think outside the box. I think that's what that resident was doing, and I, I, I think it's an interesting idea to explore. Um, here you're, you're saying though, that the site has been closed, right, since nineteen sixty-seven? It can't take any thing that is not clean?
Right, so it hasn't gone through the actual closure, but it's closed as far as accepting waste.
Okay, so you, have you ever, uh, heard of a situation where there was an exception to accept, um, some not clean soil prior to, uh, the actual final closure of, of the site?
I haven't heard of it, you'd have to get awfully creative, I suppose, to do it, is it? Because what we have on the landfill now is there's excess soil currently on the landfill.
Yeah, and we were all expecting all that to leave, to go to the other site. All right, I mean, at least that's what we've been told, we're going to move the soil over, right? And so?
So.
If there's that kind of moving the soils and things like that, could there be a potential opportunity to take some bad soil, put it into the landfill?
I'd say it would be unlikely, but, uh, I, I wouldn't say it's not, it's, it's not possible, but it would be very unlikely.
Okay. All right.
Don't leave, Tom.
Yeah, we.
Through the, through the chair, just a clarification. Um, the infrastructure plan that was prepared by BKF identified, um, a grading plan that was based on street elevations, projected street elevations necessary primarily for positive, uh, stormwater drainage and for clearance, for clearance of the railroad tracks for the streets that went across. Okay? And, and that analysis in, included an analysis of how, how much additional soil is on the east side, clean soil, and, um, that would need to be taken down uh, for final development grades and moved either off-site for export or to the west side, where coincidentally, uh, the grades have to come up in order to meet those, those, uh, designs, which were all vetted for a very long time by, um, this, the city engineer and his staff. Um, the final designs of, of that street elevation may be adjusted, um, based on, on the clearances. But that's really, just to, just to clarify here, um, there were several million yards of, of overburden on the east side that were identified as needing to be either moved off-site or to the west side to compensate for final development grades.
Hmm.
Now, that does not mean moving, I'll just say, dirty dirt from one place to another. That is, that is tested material that has been brought in s, uh, since, uh, since the nineteen nineties. Um, that, that could be moved over to help bring the grades up on the west side. Almost three million yards, two-point-six million yards of material are required to bring the west side, the, the rail yard up to the grades for that street network to function as engineered. So just, just as a clarification, and one further clarification, is that, um, since the, those reports were last done in two thousand and eleven or thirteen, um, there's been more import of material. Um, and so, so that, that, uh, whatever the balance is of material that needs to be either moved over to the west side to reach the final grades or off-site in order to accommodate the final grades will be part of, of those designs. I, I hope that clarifies.
Hmm.
Is that it? Okay.
Yeah, for Nancy, yeah.
Okay. Okay, Madison?
I have one for Tom.
Sure.
Hello, Tom?
Hello.
Um, I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about liquefaction. Um, and I had been under the impression that the site, um, could be affected by liquefaction, you know, and as a result of an earthquake. And based on what you said tonight, it seems like it wouldn't be at risk because the sand is so deep. So I'm just wondering if you could go into more detail about why liquefaction isn't, um, something that necessarily is a big worry, in your opinion? Um, and how that would, if, if, like a larger, the larger the earthquake, if that would still hold true? Um, because it's just interesting to hear this tonight, because I've been under the impression the whole time that this is like, gonna be a really big issue, and now this is some new information. So, um, you just spoke really quickly, and I'd just like to absorb kind of more of that information again.
Sure, so if I take a step back first, is, what, what causes liquefaction is, is you've got this, this energy wave coming through from an earthquake. And when it, when it comes into a sand, because the sand, you know, if you put sand in your hand, you pour water and the water comes through it. Well, water does the same thing underground when it's under pressure. So if you're loose sand, that water actually pushes the sand apart, which is what gets a complete liquefaction. But when the geotech engineers measure density, they do blow counts in the sand. And so at a certain point, sand is dense enough that it won't liquefy in an earthquake. And so what we have at, at, at the, at the landfill site is we have site, we have sand that's relatively dense. So it's not so completely dense that no liquefaction will occur. But it's, it's not a loose sand. So when the water comes through and it tries to push the sand particles away, it, it can only go so far. It'll move a little bit, so you can get some settlement, but you're not going to get this complete liquefaction that you'd get if it was a loose sand. So if you had a loose sand at depth, it would, it could still liquefy. So the depth is only a piece of it. It's, it's the relative density of the sand, how, how tight it's packed. And, and so the borings that have been done so far indicate that this sand is not loose. It's, it's relatively dense. Um, it's not, like I say, it's not dense enough that you would say there's no liquefaction that would take place. But it would be a very minor amount, and that's why I'd said maybe a few inches of settlement, two, three, four inches or something. But when it's translated up to sixty feet, you're not going to see much of anything. And so, so that's why I'm not saying that it's, it's not a problem at all. But what I say, what my opinion in looking at it is, I don't think it's a significant problem at the site.
So when you compare, like, say, this site to the Marina in San Francisco, the Marina, um, neighborhood? And, you know, we had an earthquake in which there was a lot of devastation there. So how would you characterize the effects of that? Like, how much settlement would you characterize that as?
That was, in areas in the Marina, you got complete liquefaction.
Right.
I actually walked the Marina the day after and helped people around their homes and, or out of their homes. And so what happened in the Marina, you had shallow sand that was basically beach sand. So it, there was no compaction at all to it, but the sand was below the water table, so it had very low density. So when that shock wave comes through it, it pushed all the particles apart and buildings went over sideways, they collapsed. So there you got basically liquefaction, the kind of liquefaction, if you're standing in it, you, you probably would have sunk into it. And so that's the difference between a loose sand and a dense sand where it takes many blows. So if you were doing this blow count, the, the geotech, you ever seen them with the hammer and they, anyway? They, they pop it in and they do how many blows per foot?
Like walking on the beach when it's wet and?
Exactly, if your, your foot sinks into it, that's about one or two blows per foot. Where the sand we're talking down there has twenty blows, eighteen, twenty-five blows per foot. And so, a, 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 a sand that would not, that would not liquefy would, might be on the order of twenty-eight blows per foot or twenty-nine blows or thirty blows per foot. So what we have down there is something that's dense, it's not going to move when you walk on it by a long shot. But it, so it'd be, so what you're talking about in Marina was the exact illustration of a loose sand below the water table that liquefied.
So even if you're looking at the Bayland site and, you know, minor liquefaction, which wouldn't necessarily compare to the conditions of what we saw out at the Marina, but let's say you had a major earthquake, um, six points plus, right? Would you still be anticipating that same few inches of settlement? Or would you anticipate that to grow the larger the earthquake?
No, I would, I would, what I would anticipate is what we felt, for example, Loma Prieta, that would be nothing. No settlement at all. And in a larger earthquake, you might get two, three, four inches, something like that.
Okay, thank you, that, that clarifies things for me.
Okay.
All right, I have one for you, Tom, before you leave, maybe somebody else does too. Um, and I was going to interrupt you to ask this, because it's a quick answer, but what's the difference between old bay deposits and young bay mud?
Age, basically age.
I mean, you call one deposit?
And Nancy would probably answer that even better than?
You call one deposit and one mud, or?
The old bay deposits are millions of years old.
Oh.
And they were originally under a heavier load. Nancy's the geologist, she could probably under, she can explain this.
Okay, all right.
Well, we, we have the evidence of a glace, glaciation in the bay. So the old bay sediments are before the last ice age. Then we had an ice age where sea level dropped significantly because there was all this ice that, that built up. And that's why we have these sand layers, because the area was actually terrestrial during the ice age. And then the ice melted and we now have our young bay muds where sea level has come back up. That's why we have these different layers. And the old bay mud is much denser, um, because it went through this period of, of being dried out.
Hmm.
Um, so I, if that answers your question. They're, they are significantly different behavior because of, uh, that issue too. Not, not just age. And I would just add on, on the Marina, one of the biggest problems was that area was developed with hydraulic fill, which in the old days, they would just take a hydraulic suction pump. They would some, suck out the sediment in the bay and they would just spray it onto the ground. Or, you know, they would create land with what we called hydraulic fill, which is probably the worst soil you could build on. And that's why there were, that's why there are so many.
Happening to Matt and you.
On the Bay margin, because. On the bay margin, because of that hydraulic filling process. That happened after the last earthquake. It happened after nineteen oh six. So that's why we saw what we saw in Loma Prieta.
Thank you.
You could, yeah. No, it's good. Thank you. It's interesting.
I, I have a question for Tom.
Okay.
All right. So, Tom, um, I'm assuming that you worked with UPC on the Slade Lock site?
Yes.
Okay. So the Slade Lock site is slated for, for housing?
Yes.
Yet, um, it's prohibited for having a daycare or a school. So can you explain why that is the case?
What's, what's being developed is, there's two things. There's soil, and then there's groundwater, actually, there are three, and then there's soil vapor. So at Slade Lock, um, there's, the, the residual, uh, chemicals in, are basically soil vapor and soil. The, the soil, uh, doesn't have the, the volatiles in it anymore, the, the heavy concentrations were excavated. So DTSC signed off on the remediation, which, which cleaned up groundwater to an extent that residual vapors in the soil were such that you could go with either commercial or podium parking on the ground floor. It was safe there, and residential goes on the next level. So throughout the, the area that's been signed off by DTSC, the vapors in soil are above that that would be allowed for residential on grade, but within the concentrations allowed for commercial. Because for the risk, they evaluate residential as twenty-four hours a day for thirty years, whereas for commercial, it's, it's eight hours a day, five days a week for twenty-five years. So you have a different concentration that you can breathe over that period of time and not be at risk. And so the, the residual concentrations at the, for Slade Lock are such that they can build podium, either commercial on grade or podium parking, and the residential can go above it, because the vapors attenuate as they would, if they come into the commercial, there's another attenuation before they can ever get to the residential zone. So the residential is on podium, not on grade.
And, and I guess a, a school couldn't be constructed that way as well?
DTSC is, is, has special categories for schools and hospitals and, and daycares. And so that's a, that's a special group that, that they basically say, we're just not gonna allow it.
Okay. And so the housing that, that is being proposed for the Brisbane Bayland site, um, none of it's that podium style construction?
Well, it'll depend on what the situation is with groundwater, soil, soil vapors. So, for example, in OU one, the groundwater has come from Slade Lock under a portion of OU one, and there are some vapors there. So those vapors would have to either attenuate over time, 'cause the groundwater concentrations have been going down and receding back towards Slade Lock over time. Um, and so if, if the vapors are low concentrations that are of concern for residential even, then, then you could theoretically, you could put residential on grade. And it's the same with metals and soil. Um, for example, DTSC, Waterboard, both now, I'm, I'm working on sites in Oakland where multifamily residential, uh, with, with, uh, the, the large slabs, no access to, to the ground, the DTSC says you can have heavy metals under those buildings, 'cause there's no access to it from a residential standpoint. So it, it depends, you can go on grade depending upon what the concentrations of soil vapor are.
Okay. All right. So would, um...
Sorry, can I just add one thing in response to your question? So in the northern part of, uh, the Bayland, so just, uh, just south of the Schleglock site, the densities that are being proposed there for either office or residential, uh, would likely have a podium, and that's also, uh, corresponds to the area where, where the old, uh, VOC plume was. As we go further south and you get down into OU two, um, you know, it's, uh, it's not, uh, the vapor risk, and there's different, uh, remediation methods for that, and that's where the lower-density residential is proposed. It could be a townhome on grade, but only if, in fact, there were no, uh, you know, vapor contaminants, and if the, the contaminants that are there, the bunker see and so forth, you know, is either removed or properly remediated, or the proper soil layer put on. So, uh, so yes, we would use podiums in that, in that northern area for residential, similar to what they're being, uh, proposed at, uh, Schleglock.
All right. So the Slade Lock site, um, could the site be remediated to the DTSC standards that would allow a school or hospital or daycare? Could that be done to that site?
Not, not reasonably, no. Like I say, is it, if you had, if you had ridiculous timeframe and all the money in the world, yes, you could probably do it. But it's not, it, it's not reasonable to, to, uh, think that you could, you could do it. The VOCs, um, down there, that, that are there are, are in very low concentrations and, and slowly move into the groundwater over time, and it takes very, very low concentrations to create the vapors and create the problems. And at some point, um, because you have, uh, in fact, actually Nancy can talk more about this, is you get materials caught in, in clay layers and that, and it'll just keep letting amounts of it go almost in perpetuity. So it's, it's not something you can, you can do, you can clean up to, to basically non-detect or, or residential standards in that case.
Okay. You know, I'm just, I, I, I am curious to know why a hospital would be prohibited. I mean, most, you know, many hospitals have underground parking, and then, you know, a couple stories up, then there are the offices or the places where people go to see their doctor, so...
Well, I'm, I'm sure there are negotiations, but again, hospitals have a whole, they've got a whole, uh, set of rules that they have to follow. And so it's, it's basically a standard for, for a deed restriction, don't do this, don't do that. So unless there's certain things that need to be negotiated, that's the standard DTSC, uh, deed, deed restriction.
Got it. Okay. Thank you, Tom.
Great. Is there, are there any questions for any of the consultants? Any more questions?
I, I just had one request, um, from Tom. If we could get this copy of the slide that you used for your, your characterization of the soils, um, levels, I would appreciate it. I think there was two slides in your presentation.
Well, I think maybe we can get the whole presentation, yeah.
We already have them, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Okay. Excellent. So, okay, so now we are at the public comments section. Um, so I just wanna let the public know in terms of timing. We do have one council member that needs to leave, um, Councilmember Davis at ten-thirty. Um, so if we're not done with the public comment by then, um, just wanted to note that in case you see her, um, leaving the room, she has a flight to catch. Um, but we will, uh, move forward with public comment, and I don't believe I have any slips. Uh, so anyone in the public who would like to speak? Okay? Greg Anderson. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we'll have the light system. Uh, it will go yellow when you have, um, one minute remaining, and then turn red and you should wrap it up. So thank you. Go ahead.
I don't need very much time at all. I just wanna ask Tom one question. Um, in the EIR, the entire site was identified as being subject to high liquefaction risk. And what I think I heard tonight was that the entire site is subject to low to no liquefaction risk. So I'm just wondering, was the EIR inaccurate, or what's the reason for the inconsistency? Thank you.
Thank you. And, um, okay. Uh, if you'd like to respond, you can, but it's not meant to be a question and answer response. Um, I think what we'll do is, if you can, if, you know, if there's the questions asked of the consultants, perhaps you can put those answers in writing and submit them to the city, and they'll be part of the public record. Okay. Is there anybody else who'd like to make a comment? Paul Boescout?
Paul Boescout, Brisbane resident. So, um, yeah, the, the term alternate fax was used tonight. Um, I would hope that we would have our own studies done, uh, non-biased, non-commissioned, um, studies to be done, so we can have a true second opinion on many of the questions that have been raised. Um, there's lots of stuff that was on the environmental impact report that, um, some of the stuff that's came out has contradicted that information, so I would hope that we can do our own studies, um, paid for by the city and the developer. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Barbara Evil?
Um, sorry, you're gonna have to bear with me here a little bit. I have some questions, but I haven't really had a chance to go through and organize my notes. Um, so I really, uh, so most of the experts here were absolutely wonderful. They, they make, uh, this is not the problem. I mean, I, I really respect their expertise. Um, but they were paid to come up with the best implementation of a project that was handed to them by UPC. Um, the problem is the project outline is not what the land was originally zoned for, and I doubt very much it's what the people of Brisbane want. So, um, uh, like I said, it's, this is not, that's not the problem. The experts are not the problem. The project is the problem. Um, and at the core level, the biggest problem is that the UPC's, UPC's project was not, um, chosen as the environmentally superior alternative. So, you know, while these consultants can work really hard to make UPC's plan as good as possible, it is still not the superior project. Um, I had a couple of questions. Um, I understand and really liked especially the energy consultant, load balancing between commercial and residential, the duck curve I know about, I understand all of these things. Um, so, uh, and, but I thought that the scope was sort of narrow, because they only wanted to talk about residential on-site, um, but we have Peninsula Clean Energy that could potentially use, uh, surplus generation down the peninsula. Um, and we understand as a community that we wouldn't be changing, we wouldn't be taking electrons from the Baylands and moving them to a person's house. We, you know, we all understand that that's not how the electrical grid works, that it's all sort of, it's on paper. Um, but we do have ample residential, I think, to balance out the load here, should we not choose to build, uh, residential on the Baylands. Um, when looking, and then I wanted some clarification, um, about what size of building can be zero net energy, how many square feet? He sort of went past that sort of fast, and I didn't get time to take really good notes. Um, of course, type of use matters. Um, and then I was wondering if that, the number of floors and square foot he cited, um, does that include, uh, only energy on-site, or does that include purchased credits? Um, so, uh, one of our consultants here said that he worked on other landfill projects, um, and I'm wondering how many of those were completely unregulated, unengineered, and, um, put it on mud? Um, because I really feel like that that's important when making equivalencies. Um, I also was a little concerned that he gave, uh, the expected settlement for each of these projects, but in only when, uh, Councilman O'Connell asked, was any information given about the actual realized settlement? So I thought that was sort of a big information gap. Um, and I think that going back and following up on that question would be really a good question to follow up on. Um, and then I had asked of staff several times and never able to get an answer, what is actually done with the leachate that is pumped off the Bayland site? Nobody has ever been able to tell me where it goes. Uh, I'm still very curious about that. I don't know that it makes a huge difference, but I personally, it's a burning question in my mind. Like, where does it go? Does it just disappear? Um, and then I was also concerned that these bonds cover thirty years. I don't know, this project's gonna be out there for a hundred, two hundred years? I don't know. Sierra Point Owners Association, Responsible Roads Moderning Repairs, um, are we going to have an owners associate on the Baylands? Is that gonna protect residents if, if residential is permitted out there? Um, I was, interesting to me, um, uh, engineered fill has a very specific composition. It, it, they, it can only have so high of a clay percentage, it, they can only have so much aggregate in it. And then, um, that actually, when you're putting it down to build a building on it, you, it actually has to be compacted to a certain level of compaction at each stage. You know, they put down a level, they compact it, they test it to make sure, to check the density. So I don't understand how any of that dirt out there would be able to remain, because it wasn't compacted as they went along. So maybe that can be clarified. Um, it seems to me, uh, what we've been hearing all along is, is probably closer to the truth that maybe not all of it, but like, the vast majority of it's gonna need to be removed before they can do anything with that land. Thank you. Sorry for going over a little.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Okay. Seeing no hands, we'll move on to the next item.
Madam Mayor, it's, I'd like to, um, to ask that question from the public in regards to the liquefaction. So, um, Tom, if you could come to the podium and just, um, you know, just to clarify if there's any contradictions between the EIR and your comments tonight?
Um, I haven't gone through that directly. What I looked at was the liquefaction under the landfill, because that was the specific question I had looked at. So what I did is, I looked at cross-sections, which you have, you will have copies of, and got with the engineers that, that drilled the holes and looked at, they looked at the results and said they were, they were dense sands, and I discussed with them there. So what I did is look at the actual results of the drilling, or, or worked with a geotech that looked at the results, and those are the conclusions we came up with. So, uh, if you'd like more detail on it, I could write, I could write a little more up, but it was a specific analysis of liquefaction potential in the sands under the landfill. So, um, there's, there's still a lot of work that has to be done, OU one, OU two. There hasn't been deep drilling or anything else, so I can't, I can't tell you what the sands are like underneath the OU one, OU two old rail yard portion, but underneath the landfill, the results indicate that, that it wouldn't be a significant, uh, problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or anything else the council would like to hear on this item? Nope? Okay. Excellent. So that concludes our public hearing on this item. Thank you all very much, uh, for your information. And we're gonna move on now to mayor and council matters. So we'll be discussing item A, the city council's schedule.
No new, um, meetings proposed, but just to go through your schedule, June first is not on that calendar there, but June first is an actual regular council meeting, and then June seventh is the community group presentations, June fifteenth is the Bayland speakers forum workshop, and June nineteenth would be the Bayland City Council deliberation process, discussion of the process. And that's all we have scheduled at this time.
Okay. I have a question.
Yes.
For Clay, do you think that June seventh, we're gonna have enough time to cover this many people who want to present? Is that the night? We're starting at six?
Yeah, we are, we, you should also, they have this, right? You should also have the list of interested parties for community presentations. It's this page?
Yeah.
Okay. So that, um, as I understand it, most of them have indicated a presentation around ten to fifteen minutes. So I think we're, we can get through it in one night.
Did we, were the ones tonight, ten to fifteen minutes each? It's, so it's like approximately the same number of presentations that we had tonight?
I thought they were... I thought they were a little bit less.
But, well, there was also, okay, there were less, plus your presentation and Mr. Sharpen. So all in all, probably about the same.
Just for clarification, there were less than 10 minutes for, for each consultant.
Okay.
And I, in aggregate, if I didn't go too far over, were, was about 20 to 25. It split between the two sections that I spoke.
Okay.
There's roughly two hours worth of presentations here, notwithstanding, you know, time in between. But you know, I, so I think two and a half hours we probably should.
Okay. And are we anticipating that we'll go through all the presentations and then have time for council comment questions? Or maybe we could do like half and have a break, do...
Sure.
Council questions again, then half, then council questions, and then public comment at the end. I think the format tonight worked pretty well.
Okay. We can do that.
Um, so I, I'm, I think it should be okay to have it all in one night. Is 6 o'clock okay for everybody?
It's very difficult for me to make a 6 o'clock meeting.
Why are we starting at, we've never really started at 6:30.
We start at 6:30?
Yeah. I, I thought it was 6:30.
They proposed, you proposed...
You proposed a time during the time we went...
6:30 would work better for me as well. I, I may have some childcare issues that evening.
It's the council's pleasure.
Yeah, I might have been anticipating more groups speaking.
Sure. 6:30 is fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's move it to 6:30 then.
Will you send us an email about that?
Yes.
So you can remember.
Okay. And well, any of these groups have present, have any written materials? And if so, can we get them in advance of the meeting?
Um, yeah. I mean, if they do, we will make sure you, you see that ahead of time.
Okay. That's helpful. Okay. So next item is written communications. I'd like to acknowledge receipt of written communications regarding the Brisbane Baylands that we've received since the last meeting. So between May 4th and May 15th, we receive written correspondence from Daniel and Nikki Ballerin on May 4th, Jonathan Randolph on May 5th, Willie Chang on May 8th, Tony Varios on May 11th, Beth Grossman on May 11th, and Dan Dilworth on May 12th. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.